Good morning, everybody. I wanted to introduce Bob Carlin this morning. Bob is known to me as a forester with Freeman Ridge Forestry up in Strong.
Freeman.
Freeman, of course, right? Freeman Ridge goes, you know, a couple towns over. But I'm here to, you know, he's going to talk today about his role with the Franklin County Commissioners. He just started in June, and he's going to talk to us, I think, a little bit about the history and maybe what he thinks his role is going to be going forward. So do you want to come up here, Bob?
Sure.
Hope people can see you.
Okay, great. Good morning. Thanks for having me. I'm not a great public speaker, but I'll try to do my best. The whole county commissioner thing has been, it's been on my bucket list for a long time. I ran in 2018 against Clyde Barker, who was the incumbent, and we ran in the primary. And I said, "Oh, I can try. I can take care of this guy, no problem." And he soundly defeated me by 134 votes. So it was an eye-opening experience for me. Clyde has since taken ill, and he resigned his position back the first of June, end of May, first of June. And so that left an opening there. We, you know, I had expressed an interest in the Franklin County Republicans Caucus. We pulled a bunch of people together. Some of the people here tonight were there. And I was appointed, I mean, voted in, and then had to go to the governor. The governor had to appoint me, and then has to be swearing in. It was quite a process. So after about three weeks, I finally got appointed and immediately jumped into the role of county commissioner for District Three. So we have three districts in the county. District One would be Farmington, Chesterville. District Two would be Jay, Wilton, Perkins, Temple, and then District Three is basically New Sharon, Industry, Vineyard, Strong, and everything north. And I mean, everything north. So that's my district, which is two-thirds of the physical geographical location. It's eye-opening. It was an eye-opening experience for me. I've been going to meetings to try to be up to speed and know what's going on. You know, the role of the commissioners acts to run the county business. The county business is probate, deeds, the Sheriff's Department, the jail, the DA's office. What am I forgetting?
Communications.
How could I forget that? Communications and EMA. And we don't, the commissioners don't get into the day-to-day operations, but they pretty much run the fiscal side of the business. It's kind of a daunting task. When you first get in there, when I first got in there, I said, "I didn't realize all this stuff," but it's intriguing. The thing I'm here to say to you today is that Franklin County is in very good shape. We have a new county administrator, Amy Bernard, who was hired, oh, just before I started. And she came from Norry. She was the town manager at Norry. And she has, we never had a county administrator before. We had a clerk. So the, basically, she, everybody that works within the county, the employees. We have 75 employees in Franklin County, and I never knew that until I really got involved. But she report, all the department heads report to her. She's a very sharp lady. She's getting stuff done and some things that we, she's finding some things that we weren't necessarily doing right, and we're correcting them. So we're getting, we're getting our house in order, so to speak, which is good. She's very forward-thinking. The thing, and I told her, I said, "I was going to come here and speak." And the message that she wanted me to convey to you is that she has an open-door policy. If you want to come in and talk to Amy, come in. You don't need to make an appointment. Walk in, and if no one's sitting in the seat, you sit in the seat, and you can chat with her. Some of the feedback I've gotten from people is that the county commissioner's office is kind of like a little closed society. Not at all. Not at all. And I encourage people, if you, if you want to see what's going on or get involved, come to a meeting. A lot of things happen in county commissioners' meeting. Years ago, I used to watch on the Bulldog, there'd be a county commissioners' meeting, and there'd be an article on the Bulldog, and then all the keyboard warriors would get on there and, you know, do their thing. And someone said, "Would you respond to stuff like that if you were a commissioner?" I said, "Absolutely not." I said, "The business of the county takes place at the county commissioners' meeting." The stuff that happens online is kind of decisive, and I think it's toxic. So we've got, we just finished the budget process. We are, set the mill rate. Mill rate went down two points. That's, that's by a lot of work, a lot of things, but it was, we had, we had undedicated funds that were a little excessive, so we applied some of that to the, to the budget. We had growth in Franklin County, and it's somewhere between seven and a half and 10%. And that's huge. And that's attributed to, you know, COVID and the people relocating here, you know, the sale of houses. I mean, it's crazy. And we expect that growth to continue because if, if you're like me, you realize that everybody's figured out that Franklin County is the place to be living. We've had 100 new families between Kingfield and Carabassett in the last year. These are permanent families, young people working from home, so that's great. The flip side of that is, my son, who's 29 years old, wants to stay in Franklin County, works in Franklin County, can't find a place to live, you know, other than my house. You know, he can't find a rent, he can't find a house, so we've got another issue there, the housing issue. And that creates another, yes, sir?
One of those people removed chair last November. What's the mill rate we mentioned?
1.29.
I don't know. I mean, what is the mill rate now?
The mill rate is the rate per thousand that is charged for taxes.
Per thousand, what?
Valuation.
Valuation.
Oh, corporate tax.
Yes.
$1.29 per thousand.
Yes. Right. And in the scheme of things, you know, people, we're all concerned about taxes. You know, we're all trying to manage our taxes. In talking to Amy, she said Franklin County has one of the lowest county tax rates out there. And I'm like, "Oh, that's great. Let's keep it there." You know, I said, "Well, let's, we don't need to raise it. Let's keep it down." So we've got a lot of things out there that we need to work on. One of the things, so I've been appointed county commissioner from November, excuse me, from June through December. I still have to run in this coming election. I have another person that's running against me in District Three, so I'm serving as county commissioner, but I'm also campaigning. So when I get done here, I'm putting signs up across the area, you know, starts in, my district will be New Sharon, Industry across. There's, but one of the things that I want to do is, you know, I've always been a, I spent 23 years working for an international paper. I spent a couple of years working for New Page with Charlie. I came from the corporate world, and you learn some important things, is what's your mission? You know, what's your, what's your long-range plan? What's your short-range plan? And we don't have that in Franklin County. So one of the things I want to do is, is work with all the towns, the 22 towns that are in Franklin County, and have, you know, kind of a strategic plan, you know? Let's take the top three things that are important to the towns, because we work for the towns, you know, there's some people think it's the other way around, and have a plan. You know, what are the top three things that we need to work on? You know, people talk about the jail. People talk about the Sheriff's Department. They talk, you know, communications is an issue. There's always things that we need to be working on, but we have our perception. What I want to do is have a kind of a brainstorming session with all the town managers or selectmen in what are, what's your big issue? And, you know, start changing the course, or we're putting out brush fires, "Let's get that done this year, and then next year move forward on, on some forward thinking." So it's, you know, if someone said, "Oh, it's just two meetings a month, no big deal." I'm on the phone every night. Every night. I was on the phone with the administrator dealing with some issues last night for 45 minutes. And my wife said, she said, "Is this really what you want to do?" I said, "Yes." I said, "I wanted to do this because I think Franklin County is a great place." And my dad always told me, "The world is run by those who show up." So he said, "Show up." And that, this has been, that's on my bucket list. I want to do it. I like doing it. I think we've got a great place where we all live and work and play. We've got some growing pains that we need to deal with, and we've got some, you know, countywide things where we can, you know, we're going to go to five commissioners. That was, that was the thing I wanted to talk about. And there were a lot of people that said, "No, that's growth in government." When you look at Franklin County and my district, it's two-thirds of the geographic area. And how different is that from Farmington, Maine? You know, Cobey Gores part of my district, Eustis, Copeland Plantation, they're just as important to Franklin County, but they get forgotten. So the whole move to go to five commissioners, I think, is a, is a good thing. We'll have better representation across the county. We'll have two more people that can contribute to the thought process and give us some good direction. So that's going to happen in '25, so another two years we go to five commissioners. And there were some people that fought it hard, there were some people that fought long and hard for it because they said three is just, you know, we saw too many votes, you know, time and time again, two to one, two to one, two to one. It was, it really didn't give us good representation across the county. I think I've gone on long enough for questions. Steve?
Add into your discussion about county services, the work that Sue Brack is doing.
Absolutely. Yes. I'm sorry, Sue. Sue is the Opera Administrator. She's administering all our Opera funds, and she's done an excellent job of, of getting the word out for people that want to apply for Opera projects, presenting them to the commissioners. We went through, Tuesday, went through a meeting looking at our, I don't want to say our final, but our almost-final list of doing it. She works with, so if this information is needed for like a bid, Sue's out there doing it. She's done an excellent job. Excellent job. And we've had, I think we had $5.7 million?
$5.9.
$5.9 million in Opera funds that was awarded to Franklin County. We're going through it. And not that, the need is real. The need is real. I mean, the applications that have come in have been great, and it's just been really hard to try to prioritize what's, what, where are we going to get the biggest bang for a buck? What's the most important things that we need? It's pretty stressful because you're sitting there, and you see all the needs, and you know you've got $10, and there's $50 requests out there. So how, you know, Dick, you're smiling. I'm sure you're used to that, you know, in your role as town manager.
You gotta be a juggler.
Yes, exactly. But at the end of the day, you know, again, my dad talking to my ears, he says, "You do the right thing. You just do the right thing." So, yes, sir?
So how, your first comment is, yeah, three men, that's the body system. Two guys control it inside, and three men, that's a joke. How do you improve services for all of these needs in the county without raising taxes ultimately? How are you going to pay for the damn thing? Government money isn't going to come and solve your problems.
Exactly.
And we've got growth issues all over the place.
Yep.
How are you going to do it without raising taxes?
Good question.
At what point do people have to pay for the services they want?
Yep. Yep. I think we will, we will try to do the best we can to maintain where we're at. You know, when you look at things like the fire service, you know, the cost of fire service, we had a, we had a request from Salem Fire Department, which is an association, it's not a real fire department, excuse me, I shouldn't say that. It's, it's not a municipal fire department. And they wanted $150,000 to just put a few things, put a few amenities into the station they have, which isn't much. And so we have to start rethinking things, like maybe we should be looking at regional, and again, I hate this word, regionalization, but, you know, providing services from Strong, Kingfield, and Phillips, and having that Salem group work with those other departments instead of having another department. So kind of wherever we can share services, we want to do that. And I think we have, I mean, it's, we, in the fire service, I'm a firefighter as well, you know, we do that already by mutual aid and, you know, when the fire happened in Strong, the pellet plant, you know, everybody came.
Because county is a region, so you have to look at it, the regionalization.
Yes, exactly.
Get the best in.
Exactly. Exactly. This, this, you know, does everybody need a ladder truck? No. Does everybody need a tanker? No. So if, if this town has a ladder, can you provide services for the three towns around? We do that automatically through mutual aid. Maybe we need to formalize that process. So every town isn't, isn't doing duplication so we can save some dollars like that. I don't have the answers. I don't know how we're going to do it, but I, like I said, we have a strategic plan where we get, you know, the brightest and the best from all these towns, and we sit in a room and put a pot of coffee down and start hammering it out. Whoa, Patty.
So how much is it in the planning of the commissioners for infrastructure upgrades given weather whiplash, I mean, the changing conditions that are causing infrastructure issues?
Say that again.
So how much are in the plans for infrastructure upgrades given weather whiplash? So the conditions we're seeing that are destroying the roads and colors?
Yep. Right, right. So we, we take care of county roads, and that was actually one of the reasons I got involved back when Fred Hardy was still commissioner, because I live in the UT. I live on a county road, and I was really upset about the condition of the roads. And then, you know, I saw the money that was going into the budget, and nothing was happening in the road. So we've, our road commissioner has evolved. We have a new road commissioner, Mike Pahn. He's done a great job. So when we look at bridges, we're sizing bridges bigger. We're sizing culverts bigger. You know, the old adage used to be, put the minimal amount of gravel on it, put the smallest culvert in because that's the cheapest way, and just keep moving on. Those, those days are over. Bigger is better. You're absolutely right. We're seeing, you know, what happened in Carabassett just a few years ago. You know, I was there for that event. It was, it was a scare in my life, eight inches of rain in six hours in a funnel that took out all these bridges. So anything we do, we're going to size it accordingly, and then bigger. So the 50-year flood happens every three years, so.
Could you just talk a little bit about the county commissioners' role with the large amount of UT that we have in Franklin County? Because that is unique for Franklin County.
Yep. Yep. So I can't remember the number of towns in the UT, and I, I live in the UT. We, we administer the, we oversee the roads, so we have a budget for, a UT budget, and part of that is roads. We have to maintain fire service agreements with the surrounding towns for the unorganized territories. We have to have solid waste agreements with the surrounding towns. So we are the, so to say, governing body for the UTs. Me being in the UT with my kids at school, you know, I didn't have any representation on the school board. I was jumping up and down. I was hearted up. I was upset, but that's the deal. If you're, if you live in the UT, I think your children can go to whatever school they chose to. There's not a designation, but they can go to, like, if my kids live in Freeman, they want to go to Farmington, they can go there because of their tuition, but I got to provide the transportation. So I'm trying to think, what else am I missing? Law enforcement. The Sheriff's Department oversees all the UT as far as law enforcement, and it's a huge area. And I was on the phone with Scott Nichols this morning. I'm meeting with, so I'm not assuming that I know everything about every department. I'm meeting with every department to sit down, and I've already done it with deeds and probate. But I'm meeting with Scott tomorrow, and I say, "I think I know it about the Sheriff's Department and the jail, but I want you to tell me." I'm not assuming anything. So we're going to sit down, and we're going to go through soup to nuts, how his operation works, what are the big hurdles, and what do we need to do it better? Not saying that we're going to, can do any of that, but I just need to educate myself as to how all these departments work, because as you know, what happens when you assume. So, Charlie?
Does the county have any big projects scheduled for next year and the year after? I mean, capital projects.
Not that I can think of. Sue, correct me if I'm wrong here, but, oh, yes, the jail, we've got the large upgrade to the septic system. It was failing. And one of the things that we're looking at is, we have the county offices, the county courthouse, and we have people jammed in little cubby holes. We have the DA's office down the road that we're renting space for. Extension Service is part of the county. They're renting a place from the college. So we've got everybody kind of shoved all over the place. EMA is in the basement, and the Sheriff's Department is out where they are, and we have dispatch across there. We're looking at, we've just, we're getting the architectural work done right now of taking a commute, right there by the jail, the Sheriff's Department is, the building is literally falling apart. Literally falling apart. The walls are tipping in. The pitches won't even lay straight on the wall. They all hang out. So that's a potential that we're maybe looking at, is getting everybody under one roof other than the county administration. It's, I'm really being, getting out ahead of the, got in front of the horse here, but that's, that would be a huge project. So we wouldn't be paying rent to the college for extension. We wouldn't be paying rent for the DA's office just down the road, and they're jammed into a tiny little space. We've got air quality issues where we're putting people. It's, you know, with COVID, it changed everything. So that's probably the biggest one that's.
That's going to be where the jail is now?
Yes. Yeah. And through Opera, we can use, we can't build a new building, but we can add on. So we have the communications building that's there, and then we can kind of add on to that and try to make it a little, but the county, you know, if, Tim Hardy said to me one day, he says, "We've been putting Band-Aids on things forever." He said, "We got to stop doing that. We have to start, you know, we have to take care of our employees." We're shoving, if you could see where Sue is, it's like a broom closet. She's just shoved in there, and that's what she's working out of. And she smiles and does her job, and that's great, but you have to think about, you know, the physical space where people are working and air quality and all that stuff. And that, the county courthouse, it's an old building, and it's hard to heat, you know, to make renovations in there. So you say, "Oh, blow out that wall." You can't. You can't because of the way that the building is. So that's probably the biggest one that's kind of looming out there. One of the things that the auditor told us is that we need to be investing, we need to be putting more money into reserve for capital projects. So down the road, yes. Darryl?
Yeah, just, I applaud the strategic planning, for one thing. I think it should be a transparent process, and you mentioned involving like town governments.
Yep.
I think there should also be a way to involve like the citizens of Franklin County.
Sure.
And that capital project that you just mentioned is a key, because people are going to want to complain and gripe about spending money on a new building for what's needed, updated, you know, more efficient heating and air circulation and all this stuff. But if they're involved early on and it's part of a strategic plan, it'll, it'll happen, I think, in a positive way.
Yep.
Versus being this divisive kind of thing.
Right.
So I just want to really say a strategic plan is really important and having transparency of that process.
Yep.
Because there's a bit of a reputation of, you know, things happening behind the scenes with the commissioners, and that will kind of help, I think, move big projects forward.
Sure. Yep. And just let me dispel that. Everything we do is, it's public. You know, when I, when I was just talking about the facility, if you've ever been to a county commissioners' meeting in the county commissioners' office, you're jammed into this tiny little space, and, yeah, you laugh, Steve. It gets hot in there. And during COVID, everybody is up against each other when we weren't doing it remotely. Sometimes we go upstairs into the county courthouse, but one of the things that we would do with this facility is that we would have an operations center, which would serve EMA, you know, so if, in a natural disaster and you need an operations center, that would be the place. But it would also double as a conference room, where we could have county commissioners' meeting where people aren't on top of each other. So it's just more and more. But the process is always public. We post when the meetings are going to be, and if you ever, you know, my phone is available, Amy's phone is available. If there is, if there is, if there are things happening behind the scenes, they shouldn't be, because it's a public process, and we have to follow that, that process. I mean, I've had some issues with other commissioners, and I'm like, "Hey, I want to call this cap," and I said, "Uh, I can't do it, because we're three, and two is a quorum, and we're in violation." So when we go to five, at least two of us could talk amongst ourselves without having an official meeting. Steve?
What are the interesting elements of county government? Is there a county budget process? I know a guy who knows, yeah, I could talk to him. I read an interesting article recently on recognition by the, by the committee to commissioners or service organizations and how that unfolds.
Yes. And that was my first meeting. But I'd done my homework, and I'd been to the meetings before, years before, to see how that whole process goes. And my, my, you know, watched the process. I said, "Yep, you know, you guys did your work. You listened to the, the program grants that wanted to make their, you know." First, when they brought that to the commissioners, they said, "Don't, don't, we're not even going to talk about it." I said, "Come on." When they went to you guys, it made sense, and I could see exactly what was going to happen. Exactly. And I, you know, we can't fund everybody that comes, but the, you know, there was a well-thought-out plan put together by a group of people, and it wasn't big dollars. It really wasn't. When you look at each individual organization, it was reasonable to keep seniors in their homes. "Hey, I'm going to need these services someday." You know, Meals on Wheels. You know, you know, the three, the three biggest communities served by Meals on Wheels are Farmington, Wilton, and Jay. And they didn't want to fund it. They said, "Oh, they'll be getting by with it." Well, that's kind of a low-life thing to do, is to say, "Well, let everybody else pay for it, and we'll just stand back." No, we, we have some skin in the game, and we needed to do it. That's why I stood and made sure it wasn't unanimous, and, and it went to the budget. It was in the budget. We're taxing the people for those services, and, you know, the other two wouldn't sign the warrant. It was really shameful, because I said, "Now we're going to tax the people for these services. Those, those dollars will now go back around and come into the undesigned fund, and will a lot serve what we were supposed to do." But I got to give credit to the other commissioner. He stepped up, and he did sign the warrant, and it's going to happen the way it's supposed to. Oh, yes. Yeah. It, it.
Yeah. Shut.
Yeah. Yeah. So it, 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 it wasn't a big fanfare, and I guess somebody had a second thought, and I commend him for doing that, because, and it may have been people like Patty calling him up and harassing him. I don't know.
I don't know Patty.
It's, but it happened the way it was supposed to, and there were some people that are pretty upset about it that it happened, but I said, you know, that was the political process. That's the way it's supposed to happen. That's the way it did. So now there's going to be quite a discussion, or not an investigation, but of the political, excuse me, the legal ramifications, you know, can, can the commissioners actually not sign the warrant? Legally, can they do that? So that's, more to come. More to come, so.
What are the good things on that, on those, on that group of service providers' laws? They guaranteed if they received that money, they would do specific reporting back to the commissioners on who was served for what kinds of services.
Right.
I applaud them for doing that.
Yes.
Kind of the transparency issue.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
Want to put your phone number out on the line here?
Yes. Yeah. Phone number is 207-446-6751. That's my cell. It's right here. I get up at 5:00, 5:30, so it's a good time to call. And it rings. I mean, I've had some people call already and some county issues about roads and things like that, and 90% of the time, we can take care of it right there. 10%, someone else is going to deal with it, so. 10%, someone else is going to deal with it, so.
Hang on.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Great, any other questions? Yes, sir?
This is more of an, an observation that I've had, I moved to Maine almost two years ago now, and what I've noticed is, as you're driving down the roads, when they start getting rough, it's always the right track that gets rough, and that's obviously caused by frosty. And it's typically where there's a rather well-built culvert next to it, so the water's seeping in up underneath, but the areas that are rather, a good road surface, you know, that doesn't decay out, is rather flat on the sides, you know, so the, the water is not absorbing underneath. So, you know, just as an observation, I would take a look at where the road surface is kind of rough, and, and do some work to try to flatten out those culverts.
We've, we've got, we, Mike Pahn really went after things hard last year, some of the worst roads, I mean, terrible roads. Road to my house, in the middle of March, guy driving around, got stuck right in the middle of the road, couldn't go any further. I mean, he was, he was right there. Back when I talked to Brett Hardy, when it was, oh, it was probably back in 2015, we couldn't get a school bus down there. And I went to the commissioners' meeting, and I was, I was angry, I was upset. I said, we can't get a school bus there, we can't get a fire truck there, we can't get an ambulance there, we can't get a police car there. I said, what are you going to do about it? And they kind of pooh-poohed it, and then afterwards, Fred said, we're going to take care of this, don't, don't worry about it, we'll, we'll get on it. We have a new road commissioner who's trying to get caught up to the many years of neglect. And we're, it's been a little bit of a hurry-up-and-catch-up, but when we get into the bigger projects, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be, you know, and bridges are an example, a good example for bridges are, we put bridges in, we're looking at, instead of an old wooden bridge, we can now do concrete panels on bridges, you know, for almost the same cost, maybe a little bit more, from Darren Door right in North Hanson, we can put in bridges that'll last 75 years, they won't have a wooden surface on them, and they'll be big enough to accommodate what Patty was talking about, the, the, the more flow that we're seeing in some of these, these storms, so. Yeah, roads are, it's right up there, but it, it takes a while to get caught up.
But it's only the county roads that you're...
Exactly, exactly.
I don't know if Joseph knows, but it's not all the towns.
No, no.
It's only the unorganized territory roads, the territory.
Right.
But if you'd like to step up and help Farmington.
No.
Our road.
We're, 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 we're actually in a dispute over a road in, a bridge in Madred Township, where the people are saying, we own it, and we're saying, no, we don't. And Amy is actually in Augusta right now at the archives, going through, oh, I don't know how many years of old town reports in Madred to, to basically prove to these people, we do not own this bridge, so. People are always trying to get us to fix or build or something. I live in a discontinued county road, and I just said, well, maybe I can get my road fixed. No, that's not going to happen, so.
Is the bridge too far?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all right.
Anything else? Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Presentation this morning.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I know what to do with that.
Yeah.